Ladies and gentlemen, this is a new day for myself and we have myself as president and we have our new acting mayor, Ms. Dee Dunn. Let's give her a round of applause. And we'll have to get Maize Glazer a hat, you know, to put up there, something like that. Anyway, with things going on, I'll go ahead and I'll do the prayer. Everyone please stand.
Special attentions first.
Oh, special attentions, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, special attentions. Mr. Wilmot, Councilman Wilmot, please.
I'd just like to say, Ed Lancaster, who's a dear friend of mine, recently passed away. His funeral services were yesterday. Ed was married to his loving wife Karen. He had one daughter named Ellie. He was a longtime resident of Kenner District Five. He was a local political rights advocate who followed Kenner government for decades. He believed in his community and possessed strong conservative values. He wrote articles for the Kenner Voice. He was a longtime member of the Alliance for Good Government. He also served as an officer and a member of the Citizens for a Better Kenner. Please keep this good man and his family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief?
Yeah, I would like to ask everybody to keep in their thoughts and prayers. The police department of Lafayette, they lost an officer yesterday during a standoff. Two other officers got injured. So if we could pray or keep keeping our thoughts and prayers, the community of Lafayette and Jennings and those departments, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else? That's the end. I'll go ahead and I'll start the prayer and please bear with me. Lord, please look over us today. Help us with our decision-making to make this city a better city for not for myself, but for all the citizens of Kenner. We pray that you look over the two police officers from Lafayette as in all of our first responders over here and abroad, our military and all of us and all the first responders, the EMS personnel. Please take care of Mr. Lancaster's family. And since he is now with you, please, he's a good man, someone to believe in. Lord, we follow your plan. Without you, we have no plan. Thank you. See, amen. Pledge. Please cover your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just for all. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have a quorum this morning. Councilmember Branigan is absent and councilmember Dunn is serving as the mayor. Next up, we have correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Is there any presentations or any comments from the administration this morning?
Mrs. Gonzalez?
The acting mayor is going to make a few comments first and I will follow up with Mayor's, Mayor Glazer's comments.
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that we're going to have a back-to-school jam, not this Saturday, but next Saturday at Susan Park Gym from 2:00 to 6:00. And I will be sponsoring that. At this time, Chief Morrison will come. He has something that he would like to say.
Good morning. Thank you, Acting Mayor. I received the email yesterday and I want to share it with the council and the members of the community about some, a great deed that our members of the fire department did. It actually happened May 5th. So I'm going to read the email and explain to you what happened. I'm going to read the report that these guys wrote. The email goes, "Chief Morris, good evening. I write to you as your former NOFD apparatus operator and a current EJG paramedic and want to share a recent incident I had with one of your crews. On May 5th, 2024, I responded with my partner to 3800 Grand Lake Boulevard, Kenner 70065. The incident was received as a 31-year-old male in cardiac arrest. Your crews provided initial CPR and defibrillation prior to EMS arrival. Upon EMS arrival, we were able to continue resuscitation efforts and regained a pulse. Days later, having transported the patient to EJGH, I was able to inquire about the patient. The patient was able to walk out of ICU hospital after 14 days with minimal neurological deficits. It's quite amazing. Not only did this man survive the incredible efforts of critical care team at EJGH, the on-scene crew had to carry this man down three flights of stairs weighing over 250 pounds. The situation on the scene was not optimal for such an incredible outcome. Your on-scene engine company was amazing and please recognize their efforts. Please recognize my partner that day, Krista Pearl, her leadership and capability as well. And he attached, it was respectfully, Jared Glassman with EJ EMS. He's a paramedic over there. He actually was my operator when I was in New Orleans. And he knows the training that I require of my guys and the dedication and the commitment to them. Our guys, the report reads, "We arrived, Engine 398 arrived on the scene of a multi-story apartment complex. Engine 398 Crew initially investigated apartment." I'm not going to read the apartment for male privacy. "One male found on the bedroom floor. KPD was on scene giving CPR to the patient. Engine 398 relieved KPD from CPR and Engine 398 Crew continued CPR. Lucas machine was attached, used an Ambu bag and O2 bottle at 15 liters. AED adult pads were used and patient was shocked once. CPR continued till EGA EMS arrived on scene. EJ EMS Unit 10 took over patient care. Pulse was received from patient. Engine 398 Crew assisted EMS with patient care. Engine 398 and EJ EMS used KFD Mansack to lower patient from third floor to the stretcher, then loaded the patient into ambulance for transport to EJ Hospital. Engine 398 was then cleared from call. Firefighter B. Winesley, who's here today, assisted EMS Unit 10 with transport and patient to hospital. Called 370, picked up firefighter B. Winesley from hospital and returned to Station 39. I wanted to first of all say thank you guys for purchasing a couple of months ago the Lucas devices. I can't tell you how valuable that is in situations like this. The effectiveness of those machines, they've been around for decades and now we have one on each one of our pumping apparatus, each one of our first responding units to perform acts like this. And it's through your efforts that we are able to do these things now. But I just mainly want to recognize these guys sitting behind me for the effort that they do, that we do every day, that goes unnoticed and unmentioned by these guys. So with that, I want to thank you. And I asked them to speak, but they declined. But thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Also, no matter what tools we provide you, doesn't mean anything unless you put it in the hands of capable people, educated people. And guys, as a member of KFD, congratulations and you did a great job. I wish I could say I had better success, but y'all were very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The mayor's comments today will be delivered today with a different accent, totally different accent from our mayor, Mike Glazer. Therefore, please listen carefully as there's some good information being provided. This past miércoles, I'm sorry, this past Wednesday, okay, the bond commission approved a $7 million bond application for the Kenner Fire Department needs. That is for facility improvements, equipment, and other needs. This was approved relatively smoothly due primarily to the fact that the city had managed to pass a new millage. This action by the bond commission will allow, will now allow the city to issue bonds and proceed with the necessary improvements. Approval of item AP on the agenda today will authorize the issuance of those bonds. Good news because we would have available $7 million to do a significant number of improvement. Some of these funds will be utilized for fire station, the new fire station number 38 on Duke Street. Okay, the rest of them will, can be utilized for other needs. Moving forward, the city will be following a similar process as the one I just mentioned for much-needed sewer system improvements. Approval of item 13A on today's agenda will authorize the city to complete an application with the bank commission to issue $4 million worth in bonds through the LDEQ program for sewer improvements. These $4 million are going to be primarily used for either three or four rehabilitation of sewer lift stations throughout the city. Now moving into more fun topics, the 13 hours of the Taylor Swift event held July 13 was an unbelievable success. It was a record-breaking day that the Planetarium was nearly a thousand tickets sold. Employees from our general services and recreation departments did an outstanding job in making this event a success. The same group of employees came back the following week to orchestrate another event regarding the anniversary, anniversary of the Kenner Space Station. The Planetarium featured a new show that was filled with merchandise and fun activities for all attendees. So, you know, employees from our recreation and general, general services department deserve a lot of credit for all these shows. Moving on, tomorrow, Saturday, the city in partnership with TeleMundo will be holding a backpack and school supplies giveaway program at the Punch and Train Center. The event starts at 10:00 a.m. until supplies run out. Last year's event at the Musbertolino Gym was a great success. Credit should be given to Ms. Valeria Kowas, our cultural diversity coordinator, for the management of these events. Personnel from the Departments of Recreation and Community Development will be assisting with this event. Tonight, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., there will be three late-night laser shows at the Planetarium. Tonight's features is Rush 2112 at 7:00 p.m., Metallica at 8:00 p.m., and Two at 9:00 p.m. Advanced ticket sales are available online. Weather permitting, the market at Kenner City Park will open this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. And finally, the mayor at the last council meeting announced that the Recreation Advisory Committee put together a survey regarding a preferred vision for the Kenner's recreation future. The survey is still live and can be accessed via the Kenner website on both the home and recreation pages. Please spread the word as we are working on gathering as much public input as possible. Now, the Spanish version of this good news, would you like to hear?
You're joking. That would be it. Anything else? Madam?
Thank you. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of the minutes, the regular council meeting of July 11, 2024. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2409-24, New Orleans Air Coles to hold a public gathering on November 2, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of a charity car show at Lake Town, 5051 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 2412-24, the city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on October 19, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Halloween event/ trunk-or-treat movie at Musbertolino, 620 West Esplanade Avenue. Item 3C is application number 2413-24, the city of Kenner District 1 to hold a public gathering on October 8, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of a night out against crime at Susan Park Gymnasium at 502 Veterans Boulevard. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenny, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,605, an ordinance elevating the annual tax millage rates for the year 2024 totaling 28 and 16 hundreds mills on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana on the 2024 tax roll. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, to open the public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. We're now in a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to address the council, please come forward. You have three minutes.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 52 years. I take it that this millage includes the 150% property tax millage increase for the fire department because I notice it's more than what it was. Is this, is this the case?
The new fire millage is included in this, correct.
I'm sorry, Liz, I didn't, can you repeat that?
Yes, the, the millage that was voted on recently for fire is included in this. 18.2 mills is for the fire protection.
That's why it's more. That's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dow.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, to close the public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 8B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,606, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $7 million in no dollars limited tax bond series 2024 of the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana, and one or more series prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the payment of principal and interest on such bonds, and for the rights of the owners thereof, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenny, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to open the public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. We're now in a, I mean 5-0. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenny, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to close the public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenny, seconded by Councilmember Brennan on approval. Anyone wishing to address? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage and we have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution making application to the State Bond Commission for consent and authority to issue, sell, and deliver sales tax bonds of the city of Kenner and the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $4 million setting forth the security there for and providing for other matters in connection therewith. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,607, an ordinance approving an increase to the not-to-exceed amount established by ordinance 12,187 adopted March 2, 2023 to furnish generators towable and stationary on an as-needed basis with Arco Company Services Incorporated utilizing state contract number 4400026321 by $300,000 annually for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenny. We have someone in the audience wishing to address the council. You have three minutes, Mr. Morella.
Ms. Dow?
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 52 years. I just need to know, what's the reason for this increase?
This is a piggyback contract with a state contract. The reason for the increase in the, you know, the cap was set up at $300,000. We're going up to $600,000 because we recently spent $287,774 for a generator at 24th and Delaware, which is a significant sewer lift station that handles sewer from a number of other areas. So therefore, right now, after the spend this year of $287,000 and some change, we are almost there with the cap and, and we still got a long time to go. So there, there is a need to increase the cap, you know, from 300,000 to 600,000 yearly. And we're only going to use the funds on an as-needed basis to purchase generators.
Okay, thank you, Jose. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,608, an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase of a 25-ton air-conditioning system for Buddy Lawson Gym in the amount of $52,947 from Beacon Air Conditioning Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenny. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,609, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Christmas Village LLC to supply Christmas lighting as needed in accordance with letter bid 24-2133 in an amount not to exceed $50,000 annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Is there any discussion on the issue? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,610, an ordinance authorizing a 12-month policies and training solution management system subscription service with Lexapol LLC in the amount of $74,882.70 for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,611, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Bayou State to supply electrical supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 24-6839 in an amount not to exceed $250,000 annually for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,612, an ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Unity Fiber Golco LLC for the rights to conduct the business of acquiring, maintaining, constructing, laying, repairing, removing, replacing, installing, operating, and disposing of a fiber optic communications transmission system. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.[1646.11] Seeing no discussion, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand six hundred and thirteen, an ordinance approving an agreement with Meyer Engineers Limited for professional services in connection with the fast spender community center roof repairs, and an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand dollars for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request to amend this item. They need to change the amount to forty thousand seven hundred and three dollars, which is a reduction. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on the amendment, as the clerk just read. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero on the amendment. Back to the original motion as amended, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand six hundred and fourteen, an ordinance approving an agreement with Cannon Cochran Management Services Incorporated for insurance claim services in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for the Legal Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Mr. Chairman, we've also received a request to amend this legislation to change the amount to one hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing, oh, councilmember?
Yes, I, Council President, I just get an explanation for that by the administration.
I can give you an explanation. The amendment, it was ninety thousand, the last contract we had, so it was just a typo that it was ninety thousand. It went up. It was a four-year contract. We're coming up on a renewal, or we're just doing a new contract.
Okay, so the new contracts were higher.
Yes, well, they're doing more work. CCMSI handles all of our outside adjusting. They handle workers' comp. They handle property damage, bodily injury damage. Somebody's sewer backs up, they handle that. They're like our initial step, and they track all of the outside councils billing, and they help just basically handle all the workers' comp, which is a lot for the city, including fire and police.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. On the original motion as amended, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand six hundred and fifteen, an ordinance approving an amendment to the agreement with Regional Transit Authority for transit services to add termination provisions to Section Five, General Terms and Conditions. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Is there any discussion on the issue?
Ms. Dow, I know you want to speak right now, but let me get Ms. Valerie. Let Ms. Valerie speak, and then she'll probably answer every question that you got.
I just wanted to take a moment. I have spoken to some of you councilmembers briefly on this topic, but I wanted to just kind of go through the timeline of the events and explain, you know, why we're asking, you know, to pass this today and what the outlook is from this point forward. So Jefferson Parish during its, this spring legislative session at the state level, you know, had legislation passed to remove itself as a member of the RTA. At the same time, the mayor was approached by the parish president with the prospect of Jefferson Parish Transit taking over the Kenner Loop. With that, she has capital funding to obligate to improvements to the loop. The FTA money that goes through the RPC and to RTA on behalf of Kenner, that will now be shifted to Jefferson Parish Transit and still allocated for Kenner. So basically, we will be not the outlier anymore. We will be run by Jefferson Parish Transit, just like all of the other municipalities in the parish. We met with Jefferson Parish administrators last week, including the Transit Director. They are ready to assume operation of the Kenner Loop September twenty-second. The old agreement that we had with RTA, that dates back to nineteen eighty-five, the termination clause in that document states that termination can take place with six months' notice. The six-month notice has been given. I sent y'all an email on that, and that would make the termination possible at the end of this year. However, we would like to make the transition sooner, and RTA is okay with that. So the city attorney drafted an amendment to that agreement so that we can terminate immediately and not have to wait the six months. So we're just asking for you to approve that today. The RTA Board, their legal department has looked at it. It's gonna go before their board. They're aware that we're doing this. I've been in conversations with them, and they know that this amendment is something that they're gonna be signing as well. And then we will be doing a lot of things to work with Jefferson Parish Transit to improve the efficiency of the Kenner Loop, to lower the amount of time that riders have to spend traveling, you know, the loop to get from place to place, lowering the fares that it, you know, and the transfer fees that it winds up costing them, putting in some vital stops that don't exist now, namely, the mayor wanted one in front of the Social Security Office, one in front of the hospital. That doesn't exist. When Jefferson Parish Transit assumes the Kenner Loop, it will assume it as-is with the addition of the Social Security Office stop and the hospital stop, but after that point, we are gonna be reviewing the route, looking at efficiencies, looking at the data, looking at the ridership, and just making improvements. Jefferson Parish has agreements with vendors who provide bus shelters and bus benches. They will amend their agreements to include the City of Kenner and the Kenner Loop in those agreements and manage those contracts. So that's basically, you know, just a brief synopsis of where we are, and we're all, you know, working together on this, and this is gonna be a very big win for the city.
And you're probably too young. You know, Mr. Al, you've been around for a while. The Kenner Loop used to be a green school bus back in the day, right?
Yep.
It was much better now than we're back then. Hi, Mr. Al.
I got the floor right now, okay. Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Royal Drive, Fifth District, fifty-two years. I support this ordinance, and I'm gonna tell you why. Everybody in this room should know what happened with the RTA boards just recently because of the higher-ups meeting behind closed doors and keeping things from the board. Four to five board members abruptly resigned, and they couldn't even have any meetings. So a lot of unscrupulous things that was going on, been going on since day one with them. So I'm in favor of that. However, the Jefferson Transit Authority, everybody in this room should also know, they're run by TransDev. TransDev used to be Viola Water or Violia, whatever y'all want to pronounce it, okay? Well, we had questionable invoices when they ran our wastewater treatment plant back here, okay? Took it out of house and give it to them. The procurement of that twenty-five-year contract was rather dubious itself. So all I'm saying to y'all is, keep a close eye on what's going on with TransDev, because their track record's nothing to write home about either, man. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Al. Mr. Gregg.
Greg Taff, Fifth District. Al really sums it up pretty good. The only thing I wanted to ask, add to that, though, is to the citizens of Kenner, will it be any difference in pricing for fares, and will the City of Kenner actually come out ahead by moving to Jefferson Parish's Transit versus the RTA? Does it have a benefit monetarily for the city as well? Thank you.
Yes, there will be a reduction in transfer fees once we make the loop more efficient. Off the bat, there's gonna be a reduction in ridership fees. It's gonna be better service to the riders. The bus stops are, you're gonna see improvements made to the bus stops. They're actually gonna have poles with signs and amenities, like a bench, and maybe not every one of them right away, but as Transit, you know, gets the funding, they're gonna come in and do those things. So yes, it is one hundred percent a benefit to the city and the citizens of Kenner and those who use the Kenner Loop. As far as TransDev is concerned, Mr. Al, we're not gonna be getting TransDev invoices. Jefferson Parish gets the TransDev invoices and always has, so it will be their responsibility to ensure their accuracy and their integrity.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Brolin, for your comments. You know, Mr. Taff, thought it was a good question. I think, all things considered, if this was even, the additional stops that the mayor pushed for, and the improvements to the stops, how many times do you drive past one of these bus stops and these people are just standing out there in the heat, just melting, waiting for that green school bus? Anyway, I think it's a good move, and I think it's really gonna benefit the citizens of Kenner, so thanks for all the work on this.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Councilman?
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Gilz Carpet Sales Incorporated to furnish and install flooring as needed in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-four dash sixty-eight forty-one, and an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. Item sixteen B is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one Airworks Command OG Ultrabright Matrice M thirty-T mission-ready kit from Airworks LLC, a sole-source provider, in the amount of eighteen thousand ninety-nine dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance approving change order number one to the agreement with Han Enterprises Incorporated regarding Rosemary Minor Park Outdoor Fitness Equipment for a net increase of four thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars to the agreement amount resulting in a total agreement amount of seventy-eight thousand two hundred and one dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. Item sixteen D is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of pump number three located at Twenty-Fourth and Delaware Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC, in the amount of fifty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for the wastewater department. Item sixteen E is an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the Barnes Submersible Pump for clarifier number one at the wastewater treatment plant by Precision PSI LLC, in the amount of six thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the wastewater department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of unit six-six-zero-five-zero two thousand eight Kubota Track Ho by Lee Tractor Company, an authorized dealer, in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-three cents for the Fleet Management Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving the utilization of state contract number four four zero 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 two nine seven five two for the purchase of tires, tubes, and related services from Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Fleet Management Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance authorizing the use of state contract number four four zero 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 two five two four three to purchase lawn equipment in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the General Services Department or any other department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving the use of state contract number four four zero 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 two eight five eight two, and a five-year finance agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of an Axon Air Unmanned Aerial Vehicle System, including all associated hardware, software, peripherals, and applicable training, in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen J is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of ballistic body armor and accessories to outfit newly hired officers and replace expired body armor from United Shields International LLC, utilizing state contract number four four zero 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 two five eight two six, and an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen K is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Priority Systems Incorporated to furnish and install a fire alarm system for Kenner Fire Station number thirty-six, in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-four dash sixty-eight fourteen, and an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars for the Kenner Fire Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. We have none. Item eighteen is new business. Item eighteen A, at the request of Councilmember Wilmot, a discussion concerning ordinance number twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-seven adopted on July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four regarding an ordinance amending Chapter Fifteen of the Kenner Code of Ordinances to provide for the operation of golf carts on Kenner City Streets.
Councilman Wilmot, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last meeting, we passed legislation regarding golf carts throughout the City of Kenner, which actually allows golf carts to be driven on all city streets. Just note that it was a vote of five to two, and I opposed. I voted against it. But it came to my attention after that meeting that there was actually a study, and I inquired whether or not we did a study within the City of Kenner, and of course, I understand we did not, but there's literally a study that was done by the Louisiana Transportation Research Center that works with the DOTD on a lot of studies and whatnot. So they're a very professional source of information and data. They even have professional engineers that work with that group. So it's a fifty-page study. I think it was important to bring up, even though we passed the legislation last time, I think it's important data that we know as a body, so we can do whatever we need to do, if anything. And this, you know, whoever was on the prevailing side, they may decide that they want to do an amendment and change something. I do know that the ordinance we did pass is probably the most liberal of golf cart regulations throughout the state. A lot of them, they either have some type of limitations on the speed limits, which you can't operate golf carts on roads greater than twenty-five miles an hour. Some of them have designated streets, and some of them even say you can only drive golf carts during the daylight. So there's all kinds of different things that could be done that we didn't do. So I want to draw everybody's attention to that. Also, I passed out this study to all the council members, the administration, legal, misacting mayor, and I believe there's a few extra copies over here by the podium, if anybody else from the public would like them. Anyway, I'm just gonna talk about the report just a little bit. It's not gonna take me long. This is, I'm gonna be very brief with it. But I would like to give a gist of some of the report. On page five in particular, it's like the second to last paragraph. Although there are several benefits in allowing golf carts to operate on public roads, the increasing number of these vehicles and mixed-vehicle traffic on public roads has raised concerns about traffic and occupant safety. The safety limitations of these vehicles, such as lack of protection and inadequate safety equipment, are likely to expose the drivers and passengers to higher crash risks than passenger cars, especially on streets with speed limits greater than twenty-five miles per hour. The Insurance Institute for Highway Safety's crash tests showed that mix of LSVs, and LSVs is low-speed vehicles, and regular traffic is a dangerous combination, because LSVs, with some safety measure or features, are no match for even the smallest of cars that meet crashworthiness standards on the roads. Golf carts are not tested for that. It is therefore comes as to no surprise that the growing use of golf carts on public roads has already resulted in fatalities and serious injuries nationwide. And this report actually gives a lot of the states and their data as far as their laws, the fatalities, and it's quite good. And I was glad to see that it existed, and I wanted to make sure that I shared it with everybody. Now, there are various towns that we have in the state of Louisiana that have golf cart laws, and I'm just gonna mention a few of them, because they're, especially the ones that are bordering. St. Charles Parish allows for roadways only twenty-five miles an hour or less. Again, that's a parish. St. John the Baptist allows for specific streets. That's unique. City of Dequincy does not indicate speed limits, but it's got a small population. It's only got three thousand one hundred and forty-four citizens, that's of twenty-twenty census. City of Youngsville restricted to daylight hours and not allowed on nineteen state highways, so apparently they got a lot of state highways. Fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine citizens is the population. Grand Isle designated paths and only between sunrise and sunset. Now, it's got a population just over a thousand. Jenna, all roads thirty-five miles an hour or less, but note, it's got a population of four thousand one hundred and fifty-five, so it's a rural area. Kinder, limited to certain roads and crossings. Town of Welsh, all roadways and certain crossings, but restricted to daytime hours. Again, there's another daytime hours. I think that's interesting. The population there is only three thousand two hundred and twenty-six. And that's, to me, that's what's critical. Those are the, as of the time this report was done in twenty-twenty, so it's somewhat dated, but there's been certain things that has happened since this report, and I'm gonna point out a couple. Slidell passed an ordinance, as was mentioned by the mayor at the last meeting, but it's for roadways twenty-five miles an hour or less, and it's only got a population of twenty-eight thousand seven eighty-one. Harahan passed an ordinance. Again, roadways twenty-five miles an hour or less, population of nine thousand one hundred and sixteen. Now, looking at our City of Kenner, recent ordinance enacted allows the city streets, all city streets. We have the largest population reported of all the cities above, which is sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-eight. That's as of the census of twenty-twenty. We are clearly an urban city, not rural. Many of our rural cities are even more restrictive than what we have passed here in Kenner. At least many of them restrict usage during the daylight hours. The urban cities appear to limit the usage to roads of twenty-five miles per hour or Just know that I do oppose golf carts on our public roads. Just know that I do oppose golf carts on our public roads, but if we're going to allow them, we should consider possibly amending what we have passed and consider some of these things that's in this study that might be a great benefit to make them safer. And I ask that my fellow council members keep that in mind, and that's all I have to say on the matter. I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, sir. Councilor?
Yes, sir.
Item 19 is unfinished business, and our motions to reconsider are removed from a tabled position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, District 52 years. I have a special intention in mention for the first respondent, Corey Comparatore, who lost his life during the attempted assassination of President Trump protecting his family. So let's keep the contemporary family in our prayers. Contemporary, okay. Anyway, I want to direct this to Councilman Wilmot. Councilman Wilmot, I agree with you 250% on this golf cart. Not only that, on some of your recent opposition up here to other issues, I think you're truly listening to your constituents and your voice and their concerns up there, and you don, you work, and they will. I support you, Councilman, 250% on what you're doing. Keep doing it. Two days after this golf cart ordinance was passed, they had a guy coming down Sunset in front of my house, which is a one-way street. We still got fools coming off that bridge where there's no stop sign coming up that one-way street. This man had three children on the tail end of that golf cart, three, with the back of the seat facing the driver of the golf cart. The seat was turned, designed the other way. If there'd have been somebody coming across that bridge, coming up that one-way street, and he would have had to try to stop all of a sudden, all them people on that golf cart would have been dead. So I would direct this to you, Chief. If we got an erect, a crime camera, or we got an erect, a traffic camera on that post by my house to start catching these people, it's not, it's, they're not doing it as often as they were, but they still got some fools that are coming across that bridge, coming up that one-way street. We need to start catching them. We need to start doing what we got to do because somebody's going to get killed if these golf carts are allowed to come up that little one-way street, Sunset Boulevard in front of my house. Now, moving on, back on June the 9th, we, Fort J Class of 64, had a 60-year reunion at the Crossing, right down here in South Kenner. It's a beautiful venue. The people that ran that reunion, that worked it, were very courteous, very professional. I called the organizers for mine, which is going to be next year, the Class of 65, 60 years, to try to strongly consider using that venue again. So we need, we got some beautiful venues here in our city, and maybe they're being promoted, maybe they're not being promoted as what they should be, but as a citizen, I'm promoting. And I was on the phone, like I said, with the organizers of my reunion coming up next year to try to get that venue again.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gregg, please step up.
Greg Taft, 5th District. Al must be reading my mind or something. I don't know. But I do want to also say, Councilman Wilmot, this report is fantastic, and I think you're taking the extra steps is very important because if anybody has paid any attention, there's a lot of citizens out there that have comments regarding golf carts. Some are good, but there's a bunch that are not so good. And the thing that really surprised me is that we passed this thing so fast that not only did we leave out some safety issues, but we didn't bother to get the citizens of Kenner's input, how they felt about it. And that's what, and that's what I thank Mr. Wilmot for because he must have listened to the constituents out there. And I think that it is worth for the council to go back, re-study it, because there is, there may be a place for these golf carts, but I think there should be some restrictions considering what this report has shown. And I think the issue that Al Morella brought up is very valid because it was said, I said it here, somebody's going to get hurt because you're going to have a teenage kid taking their daddy's cart, and they're going to have an accident. And hopefully, it won't be real bad, but when you put a car against a golf cart, I don't care what anybody says, something bad is going to happen. And that's really all I have to say. I wish y'all would go back and study it again and maybe work together to either strengthen it or make it more useful, and maybe even talk to the other citizens out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregg. Also, on that, sometimes the first drafting is not always the best. Sometimes we may have to go in, we have to tweak it and things like that, but we are going to see what we can do because there's other things that we're going to have to be looking into besides a golf cart. Electronic bikes, the electric bikes are getting very popular. Too big for the sidewalk, not big enough for the streets. So if we can get something worked out and brainstormed to get a better ordinance, we're going to do it. Councilman Hat?
Yes, exactly what we're trying to do. City of New Orleans actually is talking about doing the same thing as they're trying to get a handle on the safety issues. That's what the purpose of legislation is, to get a handle on them, require them to register, make sure they have liability insurance, like I said last meeting. I've met with the police chief three times on this. I'm very much familiar with Mr. Councilman Wilmot's Transportation Research Center, O2TA SA. There's 11 states that have 35 mile an hour requirements. This is a SUE Generous-type legislation, which we can always go back on and review once we do it. I've met with the police chief multiple times. I only counsel Wilmot has once. So if he wanted to know if I knew about this, I know everything about this 55-page research center, and there were zero fatalities in Louisiana on golf carts for a period of five years dating back to 2013. So, yeah, we're going to make them safe, and Al, I know. And look, I'll talk to you all you want about golf carts. I know all about them, and if we got to come back and do something, I've met with this police chief, and whatever he says goes, and we're just trying to regulate and make them happy, and the people in my district like them, and that's, I wouldn't have done it otherwise. So that's all I got to say. Ryan?
You're up.
And I'm sorry to make it to the sign-up list in time. My name is Ryan Nugent. I live at 5444 Earl Langer in District 3. I didn't really come planning to say anything about this today, but since it's being discussed, I actually agree with both Councilman Lahat and Councilman Wilmot in that I do think that this is something that, you know, where I live on Earl Langer, you know, in the area that we call the vistas or Lake Trail, there's literally nothing separating us, no major roadways over 20 miles an hour separating us from the levee, for example. So, you know, there really aren't those kind of major safety risks in that area, and then I understand, you know, one of the main issues that it seems like we're dealing with is kind of these, these more high-speed roadways. And so I did want to actually start off by clarifying one thing that I think might have been misstated last week based on my reading of the ordinance. If I understand correctly, it's limited to roadways with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour, and it was mentioned veterans last week. Veterans, most veterans is actually 40 miles per hour, so the golf carts would not be allowed on most of Veterans Boulevard. And I think that's where most people's concerns lie, not just on veterans, but on our, you know, high-density, more high-traffic areas of Williams Boulevard, for example. And I don't recall, I think there was something said about state highways, not allowed on state highways. Okay, so, yeah, that would kind of eliminate that issue if it's not allowed on state highways. But when I say that I agree with Councilman Wilmot, that I think that maybe, you know, catering this a little bit more to specific areas, designating specific corridors, you know, the big impediment for something, you know, a neighborhood like Driftwood or Lake Vista, which is right across from Driftwood, but essentially getting across the Vintage Canal. And so, you know, can we designate just a portion of Power Boulevard that connects those two sections as permissible on those 35 mile per hour roadways? So when I say that, you know, I agree with Councilman Lahat and Councilman Wilmot, I do think that this is something that we needed to look into. Maybe it was a little bit rushed, but I think it is something worth pursuing. At the same time, I think we can do it a little bit safer and take a more nuanced approach to how we handle this. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the council? Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead and state your name, your district.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Bauer. I live on West Loyola Drive in the 5th District. We have a couple of major issues that we need to deal with. One, this speeding up and down West Loyola, East Loyola, it's horrible. It's terrible. Waiting for someone to majorly get hurt. I watch it on a daily basis. I go outside, I try to get the people to slow down by doing this maneuver. I get cursed out on a daily basis. Sorry, I'm nervous. We're having a water pressure issue. I'm being told that I'm the only one reporting it. That may be the case, but I highly doubt it. I had an app yesterday pulled up, and it showed in a certain area that they were, had a lot of people saying that they had low water pressure. Low is fine, but when it comes a trickle out of your faucets, you know there's a major Try to get this issue resolved through my councilmen, stuff like that, and I'm not saying that they're not working on it, but to me, it needs to be addressed quicker because if not, we're going to be put under a boil advisory. The water pressure gets very, very low. I understand through my councilmen that we're supposed to be starting to work on trimming the trees down West Loyola, making some improvements, and that's great and wonderful. And there's things that we can put off for days or weeks, but there's also things that need to be addressed, not just today. They should have been being addressed a long time ago. This speeding and everything is out of control. We kind of went lax on some of the laws that we should be enforcing, and it's going to wind up causing someone to get majorly hurt. I would hate, I've lived in my house since I'm 14 years old. I just made 51 yesterday. I would hate to see someone get killed. I've already seen a child right after Katrina get hit by a person that did not belong here. He had no driver's license, no insurance. He ran from the cops. I happened to corner him, and I got him to talk to me. The cops come out, they took him to jail, don't know what happened to him after that. But the little girl, she was five years old, and like I said, this is right after Katrina, she literally had to start learning to walk all over again after being five years old. That's bad enough. The worst thing that I'm scared of, someone is going to lose their life on West Loyola Drive. It's a residential neighborhood. I've lived there for so long. The speed limit is 20 miles an hour. I had a lady show me her GPS the other day on her phone. The GPS had the street listed at 55 miles an hour. That is the most insane thing I've ever seen.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. We, Chief, I'm sure, your comments?
Yeah, no, you know, the number one complaint we get is traffic complaints, speeding and things of that nature in residential neighborhoods. We've gotten our numbers up. We've put four more people in the traffic division. We've got over 20 dash mounted radars in the patrol division. They have been working west Louisiana. It's just, you know, I know Mr. Al brought up about maybe traffic camera enforcement, which has been floated around, and I think it's time, and we've had conversations as well as with all the civic groups that I go to, and there seems to be support for traffic camera enforcement. I know we had to see what happened in legislature because there were some people concerned with facial recognition, AI things, but I think that's going to be a conversation that we're going to have to have. I think that's a move we're going to have to put up in front of the council and have public hearings and get public input, and just keep in mind, anything that the council does by ordinance is going to have restrictions that this council votes on, this council supports. But, you know, I know the last two chiefs before may have come to their councils and asked the council to consider it. Other municipalities are doing it. You know, it's a civil remedy. It doesn't affect your driving record, but it does modify behavior. It's not a money grab. It supports itself. Any other revenues can be used to fix streets or whatever, but, you know, I do understand what you're talking about. We're doing the best we can. Like I said, we just moved four more officers into the traffic division. We have pretty good coverage. We're really getting aggressive with the fraudulent tags and the new driver's licenses, which means no insurance. We have a lot of success with that. Are we putting a dent in it? I have no idea. You know, we haven't really tracked those numbers or kept any kind of statistics on that kind of, those kind of offenses before as we are now. But I think we're moving in the right direction, but, you know, I do understand that there are concerns in all subdivisions. It's not specific just to University City, it's citywide, and I hear you. I get it.
It's countrywide.
Yeah.
It's United Stateswide.
So we're, you know, we hear it, and, you know, we're working on it.
You know what's probably the worst thing to even think about? Those speeders aren't from out of state, out of city.
No, they're locals.
They're residents.
They're locals, they're new residents, but there are signs that say it's 20 miles an hour. And Chief, I'm going to agree to disagree with you on those cameras for the speed tickets and stuff like that. I would be okay with that if, when that money went into the accounts, that it went to the right time in the right place. But we also know the city of New Orleans is having major catastrophes where they are owed billions of dollars for their speed tickets, and we probably will never see a drop of that.
Well, when you talk to other municipalities, and I usually never use New Orleans as, you know, my litmus test.
Okay.
But other municipalities within this parish have great success with it.
Okay.
And we have other ways to get that, you know, hold them accountable for that.
Okay.
It's not a fine, but for that fee.
Look, I'll back you 100%.
Well, I appreciate it.
As long as we start taking pride in our city again, that is the biggest thing that the Kenner residents and politicians have lost, the pride in the city. We must clean the streets. We must mow the lawns, mow the new grounds and everything, and clean up the city.
Yes, ma'am. We sure appreciate your comments at this time. I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up.
Thank you. God bless you all.
One more time, Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to mention too that I know that there was a comment earlier that there was no fatalities in the state of Louisiana with golf carts in the last five years is what I got out of it. In 2022, there was a fatality of a 15-year-old in Grand Isle, so I just want to throw that out there. Aside from the golf cart issue, I just wanted to make an announcement earlier, and I missed the typical time of reports of the council and so forth, so I want to make it now. The annual Lanyup Dog Show Classic starts next Thursday, August 1st, at the Ponchatrain Center and ends Sunday, August 4th. The show has significant economic impact in a very positive way for the city of Kenner. There will be many different dog breeds, many, many different dog breeds competing, and it's free for spectators. So if you want, you're more than welcome to bring your family and go out and enjoy it. Thank you.
Did you say it was free or free?
Did you say it was free or free?
Ms. Reesley?